I now call the Des Moines Regular City Council meeting for December 14th the order, and I will have Deputy Mayor Buxton lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Buxton. Well, we have a special event tonight. We have a newly appointed council member, Yoshiko Grace Matsui, and, well, she was sworn in. This is more of a formal process, but obviously, we do the swearing in. I'd like you to go to the podium, introduce who'll be swearing you in, and then we'll go through that process.
Hi, everyone. This is my wife Sheila Grace Matsui.
Hi. Are you ready?
Yes.
All right, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Yoshiko Grace Matsui.
I, Yoshiko Grace Matsui.
Having been duly elected.
Having been duly elected.
To the office of City of Des Moines.
To the office of City of Des Moines.
Council position number four.
Council position number six.
Six. I said, I meant six. It says four.
Okay.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties of this office.
Discharge the duties of this office.
As prescribed by law.
As prescribed by law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
And that I will support and maintain.
I will support and maintain.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the state of Washington.
Of the state of Washington.
And the United States of America.
And the United States of America.
Good job.
Thank you.
All right, let the record reflect that now, all seven council members are present. Are there any correspondents not previously seen by council?
No additional correspondence, Mayor.
Okay. It is now time for comments from the public. I would just like to remind those participants, any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks become boisterous, threatening, or personally abusive while addressing the council will be removed from the meeting, and you will have three minutes to speak. And our first speaker tonight is Ms. Barbara McMichael.
Three minutes. I thought it was two. I'm just gonna take my time. Good evening, everybody. I'm Barbara McMichael, resident of Des Moines. I'm responding to Mayor Mahoney's recent comments about the need for Des Moines to pivot. Hooray. And I'm also, but I've also been hearing that you have to stay the course until the new city manager is hired. And I'm here tonight to urge you that during this interim period, to deal with concerns that people have already, who have elected you, have already been bringing before you, instead of waiting to hear what the new hire has to say. We have been frustrated that you've been muzzled from responding in any meaningful way to our concerns about Des Moines Masonic Home Preservation. That building, as we all feel, is, you know, the crown jewel of Puget Sound, but our council hasn't really been able to represent this community's overwhelming desire to see that the building be restored and its purpose revitalized. You've already heard from folks, so let's get this on the city's 2024 legislative agenda and ask for funding to incentivize the Masonic Homes owner to pursue a preservation option for the property via a public-private partnership. Also, I'm sure I'm not the only one in Des Moines whose stomach is in knots about the Port of Seattle's expansion plans. I'm really concerned that in this age of dire climate change, you seem to indicated you're okay with further port development of warehouses in Des Moines at the expense of our already compromised tree canopy and salmon stream. And let's talk about the port's proposed land stewardship plan and tree replacement program. These will affect Des Moines residents for generations to come, but the port's public rollout of this plan to the folks most affected, those of us who live in airport communities, it was practically nonexistent. The port needs to be called to account, and I'm really, really begging you to bring those port commissioners and their very well-paid staff to town so that they can explain why they think their plan's so great, and if we think they're off-base, so we can push back and provide some of our thoughts on the matter. So these are my asks: robust environmental policies to protect our community's health moving forward, and economic development initiatives, including Masonic Home Preservation, that will elevate our town's unique character and that will serve our local businesses and residents. So those are issues that I think we need to engage with you on and without delay. Thank you. Happy holidays.
Thank you, Ms. McMichael. Moving on to Ms. Victoria Andrews.
Some of this will sound familiar, so I hope you're listening. First, I want to thank interim city manager Tim George for his weekly reports, which I get via the Waterland Blog, the closest we have to local journalism and well worth subscribing to. When I was a nonprofit executive director, the board and staff held an annual strategic planning session to evaluate the previous year's successes and what we could improve on. We reviewed the current and projected physical health of the organization, and you will touch on that tonight with your decision on the Events Enterprise Fund, which many of us feel has not been fully vetted, especially considering where the budget is projected to be in two years. My boards discussed how to move our mission forward on things that were critical to our constituents: who will be responsible, what it will cost. Some fell off the chart, and others rose to the top. Tonight, I'd like to address things my neighbors and other citizens have told you more than once, here at coffee, here at coffees with the mayor, at CAC meetings, and other opportunities. As the ones at the top of the organization chart, the council should remember what we want, tell the city manager what we want, and the city manager will tell the staff what we want, and then they can determine who's responsible, what it will cost, and whether it's feasible. So for your 2024 work plan, in no particular order: one, public safety, in particular increased police presence at our waterfronts and surrounding neighborhoods, which have been plagued by shootings, street racing, noise, and other infractions. Two, create a downtown master plan and reinstate the Public Planning Commission. The CAC is great, but it's not a substitute for substantive, consistent public engagement. Three, provide grant incentives for small or boutique businesses to locate here and provide attractive rent options. Four, overhaul the website, so it's one-stop shopping for residents who want to find out what's happening in their city, adding emergency and monthly or weekly push notifications for anyone who wants to subscribe to them via their preferred communication platform. Include links to organizations with whom the city collaborates and/or financially supports. Five, reinstate the soundproofing ordinance for any new residential development. Six, offer more informal community engagement opportunities. In addition to coffees with the mayor, which I hope will continue, note that evening meetings accommodate working people and get a better turnout. It would be advantageous for other council members to appear at those to show you're interested in us, not just when you're campaigning for reelection. Seven, apply available legal pressure on the developer regarding specific plans for the Masonic Home, because that's what we care about, too. Eight, increase our tree canopy. Nine, go after state and port grant funds. Ten, stay on owners of empty lots to keep them clean and maintained if they can't be sold. Eleven, hire a city manager who will evaluate current staff regarding core competencies for the positions they have been promoted to and make changes deemed necessary. And remember that you are his or her boss, so don't cave under pressure. Stand up for us. And finally, because you know I can't resist it, hire an experienced credentialed communications director. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. Moving on to Ms. Sherry Verber.
Yes, hi. Mayor Mahoney and Deputy Mayor, Council, city staff, friends, and neighbors. I'm Sherry Verber. I live here in Des Moines. And I'm here tonight to just express a couple of concerns that have been on my mind and kind of capitalizing on some of the things that have come through the advisory council. So I am very excited about our development and the Marina Steps project. And my top concern is just around safety. So I've lived in my little condo for 13 years. Twelve of those 13 years have been relatively, relatively quiet and peaceful. I've been enjoying privacy, security, and safety that drove my decision to buy this particular unit in the first place. And there were issues for a while, as you will recall, including those hooligans who ran amok down at the marina, north and south between us and Anthony's, and had other annoying behaviors. And then you closed off the thoroughfare, you gated the parking lot, you made the turnaround, and that was just a huge improvement in quality of life, and it was very much appreciated. Now, during this past year, not just our building, but others, we have dodged a shooter at the marina. Our particular building has been shot at multiple times. We've had our lanai glass panels shot out more than once. We've been robbed, vandalized. We've had vehicles stolen that were parked right outside our gate. We've had catalytic converters taking off the vehicles parked out there, and had several incidences of prowlers. So it's not a big leap to see that crime is certainly escalating. It's at our doorstep, and I just feel we're becoming more and more vulnerable. So I wondered what is the specific plan to ensure our continued privacy, security, and safety as access to the marina is expanded? And I recall you saying that gates could be installed similar to the Gates Project south of us, and that those gates would be locked at 10:00 PM. Is that still on the table? And I'm very much looking forward to the new gated parking down at the marina. What else can we rely on for our peace of mind? And how will our already short-staffed police department, whom I have the utmost respect and admiration for, really, how will they respond to the escalating crime in our district? My next concern would be the design of the steps themselves, and I'm really, really looking forward to the community gathering where we see some specifics rather than any further conceptual drawings. So what's it going to look like in feet and inches? A lot of us, I think, have responded to one or more of the surveys, and I had a little concern about the way the surveys, some of them were designed, because a lot of the answers were multiple choice, and we didn't have an option, like to write something else, although the documents stated we could send... Oh, see? Now that went off. So as I wrap this up, I just want to say I do appreciate your collective efforts to ensure the success of the steps project while addressing the concerns of us citizens. And on a personal note, I'm so in love with my condo and with the city, and I just need to know that you hold our privacy, safety, and security as your top priorities moving forward. Thank you so much. Sorry about the beep.
Thank you, Ms. Verber. All right, moving on to Mr. Lloyd Leidl.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Mahoney, members of the council. A pleasure to be here. First topic, I wanted to thank the city for the hosting and bringing in SR3 to our community. Saw them release a couple of seals. So again, saw Mayor Mahoney there, city manager, Tim, council member Steinmetz, and chief administrator officer Wilkins there. So it's great to see our city doing that soulful healing work with, for other beings around us and connecting to the wildlife, and seeing people of all stripes come together for that wonderful event. So please bring more of that into our community. Thank you. And it kind of leads me to my next topic, tree canopy. I want to support what Barbara said. Des Moines is such a beautiful place. It's always been a really green space. We've got this beautiful ocean here, really connected to nature here. We'd like to keep it that way. Seen some things lately that kind of go in the opposite direction, like down Memorial Way, there's this, I don't even know what it is, but it's like this huge concrete. It's almost like a monolith, about halfway to the airport there. But, I mean, it looked like there was like zero balance there in terms of leaving some trees or something. I know there's a policy like four to one, but that's a little bit cosmetic. It's like, because it's not a forest anymore, essentially. You've cleared out all the soil, so you have a lot of concrete, and you have small strips of like some little trees. And those types of trees they plant are also green only half the year. So they don't plant the Douglas firs or the pines, which are green all year, and you need that green to do the carbon cycling, the photosynthesis. If you don't have green, there's no carbon cycling going on. So it's really important to have those fir trees. Also, they absorb sound. We're right in the airplanes, and so you want soil and soft surfaces like trees. Concrete and typical building structures reflect sound very efficiently, whereas the soft structures absorb it. So that's going to help us with noise. It also filters the air and helps with community health. So, and it also, it's the best filter for the ocean, because the water comes down and it absorbs everything, whereas if you have concrete, all that oil and the pollutants from the street go straight into the sound, and it's gonna, you know, harm, just like the seals we're trying to help. Also, the beautiful floor of the ocean. I know we have an avid scuba community here, and tree spaces are gonna help with that. The last thing, and I also want to give support to the safety issues brought up by these ladies. Yeah, it's a shame to see the gunshots there. I think the gates at night are definitely gonna help that, so hopefully we can get those. I just want to end on a short letter I got from former Bob Arnold Fire Chief. He gave me permission to share this. It's real quick. "I walked those halls for 30 years. The Masonic Homes spent countless dinners with residents and enjoyed quiet time in the magnificent library. I now live out of state in retirement. Can't believe this historic structure is planned for demolition. Please let me know what I can do to help preserve." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leidl. All right, we have one board and committee report, and Deputy Mayor Buxton on Soundside Alliance.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is on the... On the agenda, this is the chair report, so to make a play on words in regard to chairs. If you will reach underneath your chair, there's a few of you, about seven of you, that have a little prize taped underneath your chair in the middle. Yeah, there's one. Couple of you. So there's about seven of them out there. Anyway, yeah. So happy holidays, and there's a dad joke in there for you. So, yeah, you're welcome. So in regard to my chair report, my actual chair report, so for economic development purposes, the city of Des Moines does many things, but we have two significant partnerships. One of them is Soundside Alliance for Economic Development, and this is a partnership of five cities, the port, the Southside Chamber, I'm getting lots of feedback, and the college. And we, it was formed to partner resources and information in order to promote regional economic vitality. And the other, and then the chair of the policy committee there also serves on the second partner on the board of Greater Seattle Partners. Greater Seattle Partners is a public-private partnership formed to drive investment and quality jobs into the greater Seattle region, like Seattle-Tacoma region. And this is more on a national and global scale, Greater Seattle Partners. And so the relationships there include like Amazon, Boeing, Microsoft, Comcast, Alaska, several elected officials from the greater region. So with those two, Soundside Alliance and GSP, they got together and did this really cool thing. Over the last couple of months, these two partnerships have been working together to bring strategic global interest to the entire county by engaging in tours. And so Des Moines was on, involved in one of these tours. This was just a couple of weeks ago, and our city did great. I just want to, big compliments. The weather was beautiful. We visited commercial sites and our waterfront, highlighted our quality of life and amazing resources here in Des Moines. And this was really touching base with this global strategic company out of South Carolina. But it was in this huge partnership with, it was financed by the port, and all of these cities got together, and it was a great event. Just say it again, Des Moines did awesome. So I want to give special thanks to the port for financing the exercise. And then in Des Moines, special thanks to Michael Mathias, to Rochelle Caton, and Denise Lathrop for their preparation and support for this great day-long event that we had. So, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Buxton. Moving on to city manager report.
Mayor, just have a couple items. I wanted to announce a save the date of February 13th in the evening. And that's, we are going to be holding a Marina Steps development forum. It's likely going to be at the marina, but we haven't confirmed the location yet. We haven't confirmed the time either, but it will be in the evening. We just wanted to get that date out there so that everybody's aware. It's a Tuesday, Tuesday evening. We'll be having a presentation on the status of the steps timelines, and then there'll be an opportunity for direct interaction with staff. So once again, that's February 13th, and as we have additional details, we'll be releasing those on our website and other areas. Next, I would like to call the assistant city manager to come up to update the council and the public on the city manager recruitment process.
Let me give him this microphone here. So, good evening, Mayor, council, and community. My name is Adrian Johnson Newton. I am the assistant city manager. You also may recognize me as the former HR director. I wanted to provide you a brief update on the city manager recruitment. At the council meeting on January 11th, 2024, the city will be bringing forth a draft RFP. An RFP is a request for proposal, for those who are not familiar, looking for firms who specialize in executive searches and recruitments. And so we'll be bringing forth that draft RFP for the council to weigh in on the scope, the evaluation criteria, and any other points that we need to address in the RFP so that we can issue it. I'd like to offer to the council, if you've not been through this process before or haven't ever given input into an RFP, we can send you some examples, so you'll be prepared for the January 11th meeting. Our hope is that, and desires, that the council will be able to settle on the scope, the terms, and that at the conclusion of that meeting that the city can issue it so we can identify the firm that will be conducting our city manager search. Thank you.
Great, thanks. And just so everyone knows, that's basically our next meeting. The council meets again on January 4th, but that's, that'll be for the selection of mayor. We don't put a lot of business on that meeting, so January 11th is kind of our next substantive meeting. And then finally, one last item. The council had asked previously for staff to put together a letter regarding flock cameras. And flock cameras are cameras that are placed in strategic areas that strictly look at license plates, and they put those license plates. They're accessible for law enforcement. If there was a stolen vehicle, they could put the plate in there, and then if it pops up on any of these roads, we get alerted right away. It also helps with when there's crimes, and there's a description of the vehicle. You can see, you can kind of track where that vehicle's going. So the city of Des Moines has 11 cameras with plans to install 16 total. Some of our neighboring jurisdictions also have them, but a lot of them don't. So we'll have instances where we can track a vehicle from a crime to the city border, and then we can't track it anymore. So the council had asked us to put together a letter urging our neighboring jurisdictions to look into these cameras as part of a regional approach. And so we have put that draft together, and we'll be getting that out early next week, so. And that concludes my report, Mayor.
Any questions of interim city manager Tim George? All right, seeing none, will the city clerk please read the consent agenda?
Item one, approval of vouchers. Item two, approval of minutes. Item three, King County Cooperative Watershed Management Grant Award, Des Moines Creek Estuary Project. Item four, AHBL Consultant Services Contract. Item five, 24th Avenue South Improvements Project, Puget Sound Energy Easement Amendment. Item six, Right-of-Way Dedication, Des Moines Theater. Item seven, Regional Coordination Framework for Disasters and Planned Events. Item eight, 2024 to 2025 Recycling Program Professional Services Contract. Item nine, Department of Ecology, 2023 to 2025 Water Quality Stormwater Capacity Grant Award. Item 10, Commerce Middle Housing Grant Agreement. And that concludes the consent calendar, Mayor.
Councilwoman Nettie.
I move to approve the consent calendar as read.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Deputy Mayor Buxton. Is there any council member that wishes to pull an item? Councilmember Harris.
Items four and 10, please.
All right, we'll be voting on items one, two, three, five, six, seven, eight, and nine. All those in favor, raise your right hand. I see it unanimous, as it should be. We'll start with item four. Councilmember Harris, you have the floor.
Thank you. For the public, this is, these are two basically linked items. The, a consultant contract for AHBL to provide outreach and information about our housing, middle housing, and comp plan, and then the acceptance of a middle housing grant based on the information they provide. I'm struggling here, and so I don't want to belabor the point, but essentially, I have not been, in the spirit of the season, I have not been entirely thrilled with the work product generated from any of our public outreach programs over the past several years. This is critical to me because housing is just, I can't think of anything I'm more passionate about. And they were in charge of community engagement for the parks plan, master plan, and I, the problem I'm having, counsel, is that we do, we never get choices, okay? There's essentially, and I'm not trying to overstate this, but there's a gun to the head in that we're given one choice for the company to do this outreach, and we have to vote for it tonight, basically because there's a time factor in order to receive the grant. And I don't know how to address this process if I don't raise the issue and say, please, A, we need to separate these community engagement firms that we work with from the actual grant receipt. We need to be able to vet them independent of any money, and we definitely need to be able to do that without having that, if we don't vote for it, we don't get the money kind of a thing. But we should be, we are, I could go down a long list of examples where we did not reach the very public that we must reach. People in other languages, people in parts of town. The people that should be reached with this stuff never show up to these events. They just don't. And so I'm sorry for going on rhetorically, but I'm just really struggling with this. And somehow, in 2024, we, this is part of that community engagement. The public communication means a lot of different things, but we must reach the people in this town, especially when it comes to housing, who will never visit a city council meeting, or who will never go to the senior center or Highline College, because it's not on the bus route, okay, for them in order to get to work. We have to do better to meet people where they are, and I think I'm done.
I get a motion. Go ahead.
I move to authorize the city manager to sign the consultant services contract between the city of Des Moines and AHBL substantially in the form as attached.
Do you have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Deputy Mayor Buxton. All right, I saw both councilmember Steinmetz, and then you, Deputy Mayor Buxton. So I'll start with you. Go ahead, councilmember Steinmetz.
I actually just had a question. Are these linked? I mean, we could...
I actually just had a question. Are these linked? I mean, we can, can the city manager sign the grant agreement and without having necessarily the contract in place for community outreach?
Are you talking about item four?
I'm talking about item 10, but as they were presented by Councilmember Harris, they're essentially linked. And I want to clarify, are they in fact linked?
No, no, they're not.
All right. We have council, we have Deputy Mayor Buxton?
Thank you, Mayor. I was searching through my computer here, just, we had a very extensive presentation given, I think, this summer in regard to our housing action plan. And in included in that housing action plan was some census data that indicated what the, the languages and the cultures that we had here. And I think there was something like 7%, 7, may, I'll, I'll be generous, 9% of the population of the city of Des Moines spoke a language that was not addressed with our research and community outreach. They used the languages that covered over 90% of our population. So I will say, there were a few people that, yes, this housing action plan and this research and this outreach did not reach. But the vast majority, and it was also in the, the plan that was also mentioned, the surveys connected to the parks master plan. It was the most extensive outreach in form and in population that has been conducted since I've been elected. And so, I just, I would like to compliment our progress, and if there is more to be done, let's take a look at that. But as far as what AHBL has done, and it's, I'm impressed. And they are, we, they are recommended by MRSC, which is the list that goes out to everybody in the state as recommended embedded companies. So, I feel very comfortable choosing anybody on that list. So I wanted to just cover a couple of those items that were mentioned that give me comfort in voting to move forward with this. Thank you.
I would just mention the, and I'll just use the school district. I agree with your statements there. The school district, Highline, deals with over 100 different languages. It's very difficult to match and meet everyone. But you try to serve the whole of the community as best you can, and I felt they've accomplished this, so I'll support this as well. Councilmember Harris?
I would just point to attachment A, the timeline of services, and, and I'm done.
Is there any further discussion before I take a vote? Seeing none. All those in favor of item four, the ABL, AHBL Consult Services, please raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Grace Matsui, I got to get used to that. I see Councilmember Steinmetz, I see Deputy Mayor Buxton, I see Councilmember Netting, I see Councilmember Oxger, and myself. All those opposed, I see Councilmember Harris. That item passes 6-1. All right, we're moving on to item 10, which is the Commerce Middle Housing Agreement, Grant Agreement. There's two motions here, and I open the floor to Councilmember Harris to introduce it, and then I'll call for the motion.
I think I pretty much covered it in my previous speech. They are not linked in legal terms, but just factually, if you did not approve the AHBL contract, you would have a tough time meeting the commitments required of the grant. So, that's it.
Deaf motion. Councilmember Netting.
I move to authorize the city manager to sign the middle housing grant agreement, contract number 24-63326-113, in parentheses, between the city of Des Moines and Washington State Department of Commerce substantially in the form as attached.
Do I have a second? I have a second for Council, Councilmember Steinmetz. Any discussion before I take a vote on this item? Go ahead Deputy Mayor Buxton.
Just besides the comments that I just made in regard to HBL, in regard to this particular thing, there's, this is a grant. It's, it's for work that is already in progress, kind of. It's, it's a continuum of work, and so this company has already been involved in the beginning parts of this work, and there's no match. So.
All right. Councilmember Steinmetz?
Yeah, I, I just want to be clear. Motion one is the grant itself. I hope nobody up here is saying, we shouldn't get the grant money that's available to us. We can comply with the terms of the grant. That shouldn't be a problem. That is simply what we're voting on. Should we accept the grant money or not? And that's the motion.
Well said, Councilmember Steinmetz. Any other discussion before we take a vote? Seeing, seeing none. All those in favor of motion one, please raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Grace Matsui, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Netting, Councilmember Oxger, and myself. Motion passes 7-0. All right. Councilmember Netting?
I move to authorize the city manager to sign the consultant services contract between the city of Des Moines and AHBL substantially in the form as attached.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Steinmetz, a second. Any discussion before we take a vote on this item? Seeing none. All those in favor, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Grace Matsui, Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Netting, Councilmember Oxger, and myself. All those opposed, Councilmember Harris. That motion passes 6-1. All right. Moving on to unfinished business. We have item one, the reconsideration of ordinance number 1782 and 1783. And because it was the movement of, the move proposed by Councilmember Steinmetz, I open the floor to you, sir.
Thank you. And, and this was a, a formal motion that I brought the last meeting we were at, which did require a vote of the council at that point. Because it was a formal motion, it's not like our normal new business where you've got a couple of people that agree with you and refer it to a committee. In this case, when we were talking about the franchise fund, the creation of that for events and facilities, the information that was given to us is that we were leaving a lot of money on the table, and they wanted the opportunity to go get that money. The more and more we looked into it, there seemed to be a couple of problems with that. One, it was a wholesale movement of almost everything in parks and recs over into that fund. Two, is that, to pay for it, we were going to take a loan from the SWIM, and that loan would be backstopped by the general fund. In the spreadsheet that was produced, and I believe this was produced in good faith by the staff by not suggesting anything other than, otherwise, but it predicted, it, it anticipated only a $9,000 payment back to the SWIM fund out of that, which means that the general fund would be responsible for the balance of that. You know, essentially, $241,000. At a time when we were having some issues, not this next budget cycle, but the following budget cycle, when the general fund looks like the revenues may be running a little short, and we need to configure that. That is setting up things to fail, and that's a really bad idea. It's just going to make the problem that much harder. So, when that was made clear to me, I decided I could not support the franchise agreement, or the franchise fund that we had, we were setting up for parks and events. We need to address that much more thoroughly in the budget. I don't think that the general fund should be backstopping it, and we certainly don't need a big loan from the SWIM fund in order to make all that work. I think the marketing budget for that first year was only like $10,000, too, if I remember correctly. You know, if we want to look at a $10,000 marketing loan, so be it. But that's a lot different than a quarter of a million dollars for the next, each year, for the next three years, to be backstopped by the general fund, which is going to take away from our flexibility. So, if we are leaving money on the table on events and facilities, and I have no reason to believe otherwise, I think that was good information that was given to us, you know, we can go get that, but we don't need a separate fund to do, an enterprise fund to do that. And as a consequence, I am, we moved for reconsideration of that particular piece of the budget. And so, the enterprise fund for events and facilities, and I intend to vote against that tonight.
Councilmember Steinmetz, could I go ahead and have you make the motion?
I'm sorry. Yes. That would be a really good idea. I got carried away with the rhetoric.
Yeah, you did, man.
Okay. I move to, well, it's, it's moving, oh, move to approve the draft ordinance number 23-082, repealing ordinance number 1782.
Do I have a second? I have a second for Deputy, well, we'll, we'll go with Councilmember Grace Matsui for your first acknowledgement. Okay, go ahead. And I'm going to open the floor to discussion before we take the vote. So, obviously, Councilmember Steinmetz has had his piece. Who would else? Like the Councilmember Netting?
Yeah. So I voted for the motion, the previous motion, to create a, to create an enterprise fund for the events and facilities rental. It had nothing to do with parks. Only to make that revenue, revenue equal or, or zero, to, to bring our, our charges up to our, what we charge for our facilities up to market rate, instead of backfilling constantly our rental facilities. So, I mean, I have no problem repealing that, as, as long as we do a market study on what our rates are, and, and actually bring them up to the facilities around us. So we're not backfilling and, and paying, paying for, out of the general fund to keep these facilities up and running. So, as long as we can do that, I'm still interested in an enterprise fund, maybe next budget cycle, if we can't get it figured out. So.
Councilmember Grace Matsui?
Can I clarify if you're asking for an amendment, or is this a suggestion?
I'm not asking for an amendment. I'm just, I'm just stating my piece.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarification. I was here when the discussion was had about the enterprise fund the first time around, and I believe that many of the steps that were hoped to move forward in order to look at the competitiveness of the rates are something that can be accomplished without designating it as an enterprise fund. I think there could be a rate study. I think there could be a restructure of rates. I think there could be a marketing plan and business plan, all accomplished without changing this to an enterprise account or fund. And so, I support this motion.
I, I was willing to see the, see it, because I want to see the effects of it. At the time, when we were making this decision before, there was the potential that we were going to need a couple of police vehicles. And it was going to affect our reserve to a greater amount. That's obviously changed recently in new information. I am not opposed to the enterprise fund, but not today. I see it being something that could potentially be done, and I look for a business that can break even in the future with more information. I definitely want to entertain this as we move forward in council in the upcoming year or years, as we get more data and more information. But, so, I'll be supporting this, this motion, but I do, and will say, that I'm committed to reconsidering this down the road, when I think we've, we've had some other questions answered. And again, like I said, the biggest one for me was when we were making decisions between police and parks and those kind of things that made it a little more difficult, and that sense has changed. Anybody else? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion to repeal the ordinance 1782, raise your right hand. And that passes unanimously. Councilmember Steinmetz, going to get you to do a motion on the second one, please.
I'll even do the motion before I make the case.
Yeah, we're going to try something new.
I got to mix it up. I move to approve draft ordinance number 23-083, repealing ordinance number 1783.
And I got a second from Councilmember Grace Matsui. Any discussion before we take a vote on this, this motion? Councilmember Steinmetz, go ahead.
Yes. Just, just to clarify that this, this is the loan, this ordinance is the loan from the SWIM fund, which will then be repealed, and so that money will stay in the SWIM fund.
Thank you for the clarification. Any other discussion before I take a vote? Seeing none. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Passes unanimously 7-0. All right. Moving on to a long-awaited one. The Cecil Powell Neighborhood Park is an improvements in new business, and we will have our Public Works Director, Andrew Murgis, speak to us.
Good evening, council and mayor. I got some great news for the holidays coming up. Unfortunately, Nicole Nordholm is not feeling well, so I'm going to fill in for her on this Cecil Powell Neighborhood Park Construction Contract Award. So a little bit of background, the park is considered a mini park in the Parks Master Plan. There's an original wood play feature that was removed back in 2014, like probably a lot of folks remember. There's deterioration of the wood, and everything exceeded its expected service life, so we had to remove it pretty quick. The improvements moving forward are identified in the 2022 through 2027 Parks Recreation and Senior Services Master Plan. We did go through a public solicitation for construction bids. We advertised back in September twice with Seattle Times and Daily Journal of Commerce to try to get the most contractors looking at it. Then on October 17th, we had five bids come in, which was great for a small park project. We do have one responsive low bid, which came in lower than our engineer's estimate, which is wonderful, with McCann Construction Enterprises at $163,113.15. But in general, a great price for the project, definitely compared to the highest bidder there at $289, which is pretty high. So a couple proposed park improvements, these figures are a little, not too detailed, but enough to give you an idea of what's going on. We've got new play equipment going in, so a play structure with some climbing, a couple of slides out there, a little teeter-totter. On the center of the screen, that's a circle, that's one of those little climbing rope ladders that spin around for kids. And then a couple swings over onto the right-hand side of the figure over there. We also have ADA access, so we've got a path that's going to be built around the park, along with two benches and a picnic table, I believe. And I think there's a bike rack as well going in. Another picture of some graphics from one of the vendors we worked with, there's kind of everything I just mentioned there, the slides, a little turning element there for the kids, and the accessibility around it. So I think it's going to be a great little pocket park, or a little small park for the community out there. And then this is the proposed council motion for consideration on approving the construction contract. And that concludes my presentation.
Can I get a, can I get a motion? Go ahead Deputy Mayor Buxton.
I move to approve the Public Works contract with McCann Construction Enterprises Incorporated Contractor for the Cecil Powell Neighborhood Park Improvements Project in the amount of $163,113.15. Authorize a project construction contingency in the amount of $22,000, and further authorize the city manager to sign said contract substantially in the form as submitted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Netting, I got the second on. All right. Go, Councilmember Netting.
I had one question. So there's ADA accessibility around the park, but we weren't required to make the play equipment ADA accessible?
No, the play, so, let me back up on what I meant by ADA. So everything is going to be ADA compliant and safety compliant. The walking path, we tried to make sure we had ADA walking path inside the actual park itself for wheelchair accessibility. All the park features will meet current standards in ADA as well.
Okay. So like, it won't be wood chips?
It will be wood chip, wood chips, I believe, out there still, yeah.
And that's still ADA compliant?
For the...
To get to the... To get to the play structures.
Yes, there's different rules on ADA and accessibility. So, we focus more on the wheelchair accessibility, on getting to the picnic table and the benches out there versus to the play structures themselves.
Thank you. I have Councilmember Steinmetz and Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, I have a question, because I don't necessarily speak construction contracting like some members of our council do. What is the project contingency in the amount of $22,000?
That's an authorized amount in which, as the Public Works Director, I can sign off on, on construction changes as they occur in real time versus having a delay in construction and coming back to the council for every little minor change that occurs on a contract.
And is that $22,000 total or $22,000 per change?
No, that's $22,000 total. So, if anything happens above and beyond that, I'll come back to council for additional requests for appropriation for the project.
Thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. So, how do I put this? We've worked with them before, right? Yeah, I mean, they, they had a resume, a list of, you know, projects very long, which is great, but I'm just, should I be surprised by the low price? I'm just asking, just out of curiosity.
When we do bid reviews, so, we go through, we look at their pricing, we look at how they, how they move money between one bid item and another, and in this case, we deem them responsive bidder. So, we didn't see any anomalies that would say, wow, they kind of made this price too low compared to another bid price.
Right, but I mean, I'm just saying, we have certain vendors we've worked with many times, and you can, one can have a certain confidence. I'm just, should I be struck by the, by the low cost of this relative or just happy?
I'd be happy about it.
Okay.
McCann Construction's been around quite a while. I've worked with them, not in the capacity of the city, but I've worked with them as a consultant before on different projects.
That's what I wanted, okay.
It's not a brand-new contractor. They've been around for a while.
Thank you. Okay, so, the other thing is, and this may be completely out, there's like a power pedestal on the margin off to the side of that. I'm, I'm sure that's not our property or whatever, but is that ever any kind of a concern with like a playground thing?
Not on this project. That wasn't, I'd have to take a look at that. It may not be on city property or city-owned, but we don't have any electrical servicing or anything like that as part of this project.
Okay, no, I'm not even, I'm just thinking, it's like, so, there's the park, there's a sidewalk, there's like a little margin, and there's this like meter pedestal that just is out in the middle of nowhere. And, I mean, I'm sure you can't move it or anything, but I was just.
Yeah, I'm assuming there's probably an easement for a utility to be there. And if there's any issues that we run into, construction or safety issues, we'll, we'll deal with that during construction and adjust if we need to.
You've made many, many people very happy. Thank you.
I, go ahead, Councilmember Grace Matsui.
On that note, I just wanted to ask if you had an estimated timeline for when it might come along.
I knew that question would come up. So, unfortunately, like everybody knows, there are still material delays in the industry. Park equipment's been really tough to get through a lot of vendors due to steel fabrication. So, our Field House Park right now, we've been waiting for about six months to get the equipment in order to start the Field House Park, which we awarded back in the summer. So, this one, I'm hoping it goes a little faster. So, I'm hoping by the second quarter of 2024, we'll be getting this done. That's my hope.
Thank you. I actually reached out to Ms. Stephanie Harris. She's been of the advocate for this play equipment. I'd hoped to have her come today. She's unfortunately in another state and was not able to attend, but her and her daughter, we're static. And I'll definitely be supporting this. I'm excited for us to get this new play equipment, equipment in this park. It's been a long journey for all of us, but it's good to see that we're finally moving into this phase of it. So, I'm very happy, and thank you for your and your staff's hard work on this.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion before I take a vote? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. It passes unanimously. Ms. Harris, you are going to get a new park, get some play equipment. Your kids are going to be excited. All right. Moving on to item two, which is the 2023 budget amendments, and our Finance Director, Mr. Friend, Jeff Friend, our friend, Mr. Jeff Friend, you have the floor, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council, Jeff Friend, Finance Director. I have some slides for those who don't have a packet to see the errors that we want to correct relating to the budget amendments that were presented on November 9. Hopefully, this won't be too in the weeds, but an accountant's been asked to show spreadsheet things, so that can be dangerous sometimes. There were, there's three items in this budget amendment in the agenda packet. The first two are corrections, and then the third is just a new request. So, the original agenda item had schedules for the general fund and for all the other funds, and there were some errors caused by Excel formulas not doing what we thought they were. So, we're just going to show that, just so everybody can understand what happened. So, this is a schedule from the general fund that was in the November 9 packet. If you look at the expenditure column, it subtotals to $42,400. However, if you look above, obviously, that's not the correct subtotal. The Excel formula was adding the shaded in yellow numbers. It should have been a total of $224,900, had the formula actually included everything it should. This is the exact thing that drives accountants nuts. So, and I would also add that this kind of thing in a spreadsheet, we have put controls in the model now that if there's anything out of balance anywhere, whoever's looking at it will have red flags in their face. So, I want to emphasize that we have corrected, you know, the oversight in these formulas. The other one for the general fund is, this, this was the schedule. You'll see Public Works had $10,500, and then transfers totaled 62, 628,500. And this formula was adding everything in yellow. So, that one included $10,500. That should not have been included in transfers. It should have been $618,000. So, essentially, the impact shown here is, the first column shows what was included in the November 9 packet, second column is what it should have been, and then the variance. So, that's where the $172,000 comes from for the general fund. So, it was actually, what was approved in the ordinance was $172,000 short of what actually was in the packet. And then one other one also, and this is one who's a little bit in the weeds, but there's a scheduling ordinance, and there's schedules in the agenda packet. The ordinance schedule pulls from the other schedules. You'll see that 114 highlighted on the side. What that did was, it took that $10,000 and put it in the Fund 114, the ARPA Fund, instead of the Hotel Tax Fund, which is Fund 111. So, this is the impact, as you can see here in the ordinance schedule, the hotel motel tax should have had $10,000. The American Rescue Plan Act should have had $679,000, landed in the wrong place. And so, that's the, the math errors that were in the original packet and that we're asking just to be corrected, just for accuracy. That's the conclusion of that riveting slide presentation. We also, in Fund 500, which is in the agenda packet also, is a request for $25,000. The budget was looking really tight, and it was looking that way because there was two invoices, one for police radios, and then another for replacing the auto lift for about $50,000. And so, that, you know, it might finish under budget, but the $25,000 will help cover those costs and give us a little bit of breathing room there for finishing under budget for that fund. So, that's, that's really the substance of the agenda packet for, or this item.
Councilmember noting.
I move to enact draft ordinance, yes, I'm sorry. I wanted to make sure I was reading right. I move to enact draft ordinance number 23-081 relating to the municipal finance, amending the 2023 annual budget adopted in draft in ordinance number 1764.
I have a second for Councilmember Steinmetz. Any discussion or questions? Councilmember Harris.
And I'm just being rhetorical. I'm sure you can guess what I'm going, is there any way in heck that we can avoid this whole Excel? When I hear the word Excel, my blood pressure immediately goes up. So, I mean, is there somebody we could pay to make this, to automate the, the software natively to make this? I don't even have to go on yet.
Well, I would say.
I don't even need a, I'm just, I am just expressing my most profound wish to avoid, whenever I hear the words import and export, just my nerve endings start to go, yeah.
This particular item is not an export-export. It's just, we created the format, designed it, and then it, we had to strengthen the controls, the checks.
Okay, I'm just, just know that whatever could be done, I would fully, I'm there for you. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion. All those in favor, raise your right hand, and the motion passes seven zero. All right. Introduction of Items for Future Consideration. This time is for the sole purpose of proposing new business items that have not previously been before the council for discussion on a future agenda. This is not a time for questions about old business. Councilmembers can submit questions or seek updates on previously discussed business to the city manager anytime. Do any councilmembers have new business they would like to propose? Councilmember Harris.
In, I was at the last Port Commission meeting where they rolled out the land stewardship program, and I would ask the council's support in inviting the land stewardship program manager here to present to the council. They last, the port last gave us a very good presentation on tree canopy in 2021, what was called the Green Cities Partnership, and it would be a good thing for them to come in and talk to us about their best practice in environmental management and see where, what I got from that is that they have updates on how the entire area is doing in terms of tree canopy and just environmental.
Councilmember Harris, I'll be glad to support you on that. Is there another councilmember that'd like to do that? I have, we have plenty enough. We'll work to get that on the agenda in 2024.
I was just going to ask if, if we think that that would be a good thing to remount to the Environment Committee, or do we want to have a study session, or is that going to be a discussion?
I would like to defer to staff and see what's best in a recommendation there, but coming before the council.
I'd like to bring it to the full council because of, basically, I would like to get the.
And that's fine. Sir, sir, yeah, sir, you have your support for that. So, let's go ahead and, and we'll direct council to see what can be done.
We'll reach out and see about scheduling.
All right. Is there any other new items? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to Board and Committee Reports, and welcome Councilmember Grace Matsui, and you have the honor of being our first Board and Committee Report tonight.
Thank you. I actually am not on any boards or committees, but I do have an update for you all. I wanted to say thank you very much to Interim City Manager Tim George and the staff who were present at my orientation. It was very helpful to have that access and be able to meet folks in person to get to know you all. On, let's see, it's already December 9. I was able to attend the Association of Washington City's Elected Officials Essentials Workshop with Deputy Mayor Buxton and Councilmember Oxiger. We went over things like understanding your role in local government powers, the preventing and interpreting of the ethics code, and introduction to municipal finance, which really, I think, could have been eight or nine hours, and I think we went over in about 20 minutes. It was not enough, but it was a good start. And that also covered our open government training, so I am officially trained in public meetings, public records requests, and records retention. A thank you to Bonnie and others who helped register us for that event, and it was highly enjoyable.
You were, you were open to eight or nine hours of finance, municipal finance. Woo, you're, you're, you're going to be fit right in. Welcome. Councilmember Harris, you have the floor, sir.
I had a meeting with the interim city manager, and at the risk of sounding snippy, it is notable because it was my first contact with our CEO one-on-one in over three years. I thank him for that. I attended a START meeting, our Community Airport Roundtable. There are two openings for the community right now, and I strongly encourage a resident to apply. They have justly received a great deal of criticism, but if you are concerned about the airport, do it, and I'll tell you why. It's because they often, because the port is so much larger, they often get access to a lot of information that's very useful way ahead of the city, including things on housing, by the way. The port is establishing a mitigation bank, which is extremely smart, and we could have done it years ago. Basically, it's a bit like carbon credits in that any agency anywhere, when they need to pay permit fees, they could pay into our mitigation bank to help us with our environmental issues. And when you look at the eye-popping numbers that are going to be happening with the marina, it's something we should think about. For example, when we built the North Sea Wall, we paid 400 grand to Everett to help with their Blue Herons. I would like going forward that we have other people pay us for our environmental programs. I want to wish everyone happy holidays, especially our staff. Government work means not just dealing with customers, but also electeds who are sometimes no day at the beach. I often hear positive feedback from the public about how expeditiously concerns are being addressed, and I hope our staff feels that sense of appreciation, because I hear it. Some of that surely comes from the increase in public engagement, but I just want to ask people to be cautious in their optimism. I mentioned that thing with the city manager, not to be snippy, but this is a very longstanding issue, communication, however you define it. And in the coming year, I just want to ask the residents to, you know, keep at it, don't be complacent, keep showing up, but be patient. It took a long time to get to where we're at in terms of the lack of public engagement, and it's going to take a long time to shift direction. But regardless, it is always an interesting journey for me, and I want to thank the residents for the opportunity to serve again, and it is always my honor. Thank you, and happy holidays.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. We're moving on to Councilmember Steinmetz. I'm sorry.
May I ask a clarifying, clarifying question of the councilmember after his report?
Really quick, please.
Could you, you asked people to be interested in START. Could you say what that is?
The Sea-Tac Airport Roundtable, there is a, an link to an application form on the city's front page right now. Two slots are open.
Thank you. All right. Councilmember Steinmetz, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As many of you know, Deputy Mayor Buxton and I are both somewhat involved in the Sound Cities Association, which is the, essentially, the cities in King County who have banded together so that we have one voice. The county has one voice, the city of Seattle has another voice, and it provides for a little bit of, of balance in that. And Deputy Mayor Buxton was just recently re-elected to the Sound Cities Association Board, and she is from the South Caucus. There's a, an area down, down here, we call the South, and that's the caucus. So, congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I've been involved in the PIC Committee, which is the Public Issues Committee, and there's one thing that I do want to bring to everybody's attention, and that is that the, King County is considering a, a climate, creating a climate change fund. And there are still a lot of pieces that need to be worked out, but Sound Cities is trying to determine how to respond to that. And a lot of the discussion last night was really focused around whether there is a sense of another fund, another taxing. another tax increase to pay for that fund and, and whether we thought that was a good idea or not. The city of Kirkland, um, put together their own, uh, letter, uh, to Sound Cities Association, to the board and to the Public Interest Committee, uh, expressing their concerns about that. And I, I think it would be a good idea if, uh, the city of Des Moines were to at least consider, uh, writing their own letter, uh, about that. And so that's my, my suggestion. I don't know that it needs, uh, it would come back to the council, uh, at our next meeting, I would hope, uh, for approval. And...
Yeah, we, uh...
Should get on that.
We should, we could have, we should have brought that up in new business, but, uh...
Okay.
But if you would like that right now, and we have two other people, we can have the staff address that. Could you state exactly what you want so the city manager understands?
Yes, there is a, there, there is a climate change fund that is being considered by... It's a one billion dollar fund. I'm sorry. I'm getting some, some help here remembering the numbers. Uh, you know, it's a one billion dollar fund is what they're talking about to address climate change issues within King County. The distribution of that is, is not entirely clear yet. The, where that one billion dollars is gonna come from is not entirely clear. But obviously it'll be some form of taxation. And, um, you know, I think that perhaps, uh, we would be well-served to give some feedback, uh, in a more formal process than just simply a committee discussion, uh, on this issue, to Sound Cities Association advocating, uh, or at least be, making clear what Des Moines thinks is important about this.
So what you're like is a letter pertaining to that matter, and I...
And I, and I think Deputy Mayor Buxton and I can probably draft that, um, if you're interested in us doing that. That'd be great. Okay. Is, is there a third?
We, we had that there. We were, no problem there.
All right. Sorry, it should have been new business, but I wanted to...
No, it's...
Bring it in as my Board and Committee Report, so...
If we're gonna do it and we're gonna take that process, then let's make it new business and make it happen. All right.
Thank you. There was nothing further.
Okay. And then now I have Councilmember Oxiger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no report, but I, I just want to note that it is the last meeting of the year and wish everybody happy holidays and looking forward to the new year. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nutting.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the Des Moines Art Commission met on Monday, and the biggest takeaway was, uh, Melian Spreger gave us a, uh, update on the Squidorama, um, down, uh, at the Mass Center. And in conjunction with the Mass, Melian, uh, put on this event. And, uh, um, there was well over four hundred people that attended. It was well-attended this year. Possibly due to the change of the hours, instead of being after the Mass closed, uh, they ran it with, um, the Mass being open at the time. And, uh, it was well-attended, a lot of good feedback, and, uh, that was pretty much it for that. I did want to thank my constituents for electing me again for another four years. I'm proud to serve my community and proud to be up here. So thank you very much. And I also wanted to say happy holidays to everybody, to you and yours. I hope it's safe and fun and, uh, look forward to seeing you next year and serving for the next four years. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Buxton.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I want to join in a hearty welcome aboard, Councilmember Grace Matsuwi. Uh, looking, really looking forward to working with you. I've appreciated connecting already, uh, so good, good, good. Uh, over the last several weeks, I've attended several legislative discussions, uh, regional coalitions. And I just want to, I'm very pleased, especially in the South County area, that public safety appears everywhere. There is a lot of energy in the county right now from cities, uh, to really work the support and resource for public safety. So I'm excited to see what's gonna come out of the legislature, uh, this spring. And speaking of my appreciation for, uh, officers in general, ours in particular, uh, the Shop With A Cop event was fabulous this year, um, put on by the Police Foundation. Huge thanks to Melian Spreger again, speaking of. And, uh, so I appreciate our department partnering with several agencies around and South King Fire, and great. So thank you to our officers and the foundation. I did want to add a little to the climate crisis so that it's not misunderstood that we would not be in favor of supporting things ha- having to do with the climate crisis. It's just that, uh, there is, there are billions of dollars coming from the federal government, and the state has invested highly, millions and millions of dollars to the climate crisis. So I think the, the energy is, hey, let's, let's see if cities, uh, take advantage of all this funding that's already out there instead of the county coming and taxing again without even seeing how the money that we have is gonna go. So I think that there's a little bit of, let's, let's see how it works and maybe ask for it later. There's, we are tax burdened, and especially when we're coming on wanting to support public safety. I think, um, that's a big consideration. Thank you for your congratulations, Councilmember. I appreciate it. So in closing, you know, this season, uh, my personal tradition is Christmas. And along with my per, uh, personal, um, tradition, uh, and my belief in God, I, I do want to thank him for, uh, loving a faulty world and giving us something really, really valuable for free and for being willing to go through pain for people who make mistakes. And I think that's a good example for me to continually be willing to go through challenges and difficulty for people who make mistakes because it's the right thing to do. And, um, I'm so thankful somebody does that for me. So happy holidays, Merry Christmas. Hope you enjoy your season. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Buxton. As your mayor, I come to my end of my two-year term. And, uh, I was looking back at what we've done in this city, all of us, council, staff, the residents. We've worked through some really tough challenges. One was we came out of COVID, something that the last time it happened was about a hundred years ago. And I want to thank everybody in the fact that you all tried to ensure everyone's safety. A lot of people had to make sacrifices and so forth, but it was worth it. But I do want to remind people COVID is still rampant and to take and exercise caution. We passed a bond. This broke a forty-year cycle. Now, there's a lot to be determined in what the projects are gonna be and look like in some of the details, but this was a major step for this city to go forward, to advance our future. Some of the other things we're gonna, we're dealing with now and will be dealing with over the next couple of years. One of the reasons why we have a finance committee or will is inflation and the cost of goods sold and the cost of labor has exponentially grown in relation to the revenue sources. So we've got some tough challenges ahead of us there. We heard so, we heard some of the public speak about crime and issues like that. We have faced unprecedented state policy change. And the way the courts adjudicate and punish crime and ramifications for those things that have compounded not only this city, but the community and the county as a whole. And the, we've, we've definitely seen the effects from that, and it's added new challenges. I want to thank our police force for always doing a fantastic job. I think you guys are, are unsung heroes in our community, and I wholeheartedly thank you. Um, we've dealt with the new phenomenon, particularly as COVID came in, with the positive and negative sides of social media. It's really had a different effect on the community. Information and misinformation and everything are, are rampant in the community. And it's, uh, there's the, what is it, the Bandolini's Law, or I'm sure I got that wrong. But it's like, if there's misinformation, it takes five or ten times or exponential times the effort to correct it. And it's been something. We've dealt with censures and resignations and so forth, and this is some of a two-year program. But we've accomplished a lot. You know, like I said, the bond. We, we, the Safe Routes, uh, um, to schools on Twenty-Fourth and then what we're gonna do in Two-Hundredth. Uh, the Sky Bridge, that's gonna connect our seniors where they don't have to risk their lives coming across the street. And it takes the terrace and the gardens and brings them together. You know, the theater's coming around. I'm understanding that I think occupancy occurs in the next matter of weeks, which is exciting. Um, we, we did a lot during COVID where we assisted our businesses in a very tough time. I've had many of them tell me that if they hadn't got the grants and the availability of, of the monies that they needed during a tough time, they very well might not be here today. Um, we've had vandalism and damage, and we've been able to help the businesses and the staff and your resources and your creativity. I want to wholeheartedly say thank you for coming up ways to help them. And also those in need, those that needed rental assistance and utility assistance and stuff like that. We got an award for, uh, delegating our ARPA funds so strategically across so many things that we effectively helped so many people rather than put it in one thing or another. I think we tried to help as many people as we could, and so for that, I'm thankful. As I've mentioned before, the bond breaks a forty-year cycle of moving pro, you know, moving forward. I also, um, you know, we, as we move into the future, we made some hard decisions, and we will be selecting a new city manager, and this will be bestowed upon the responsibility of council and the residents. And it does give us an opportunity because we are at a time, as many of you pointed out, where we need to pivot. We need to change. And it's a great time to be optimistic, positive, supportive in ways that we can find the new leadership that's gonna represent the changes. A lot of things have changed over the last five or six years. Um, you know, my compliments to our former city manager, Michael Mathias. I thought he did a great job. And compliments to our interim city manager, who's definitely stepped up the case, as I knew you would. So you've just proved my point, and I'm very happy for that. And I just want to say thank you. But mostly, whether you've liked me as mayor or not, and that's your, that's your right to do so, right? We all, we all have to live that world in our aquarium or fishbowl that we get to live in as elected officials. It doesn't matter. I've appreciated your opinions. I've appreciated your feedback. I appreciated your care and concern about the community. And I want to say thank you to each and every one of you for that honor that I was bestowed in the community. It would, as, as it was said by others here, it's always been an honor. I can tell you that this council, whether we agree or disagree, every one of us, and I can say that wholeheartedly on behalf of the council, you have some people here that really care, genuinely care about your community each and every day. And with that, I'd like to, uh, wish you all the happiest of holidays as well. The next regular council meeting will be January fourth. And with that, do I have a motion to adjourn? I have Councilmember Nutting and a second by Councilmember Steinmetz. All those in favor, raise your right hand. This meeting is adjourned. Have a great holiday.